I'm in business. All right, I'll call the meeting to order. We are Committee of the Whole, February 25th. Is there any declaration of interest? Check my second screen, I do not see any. So once again, if one does arise, I'll ask you to declare at the time. And we have item number three, Business arising from the minutes, which is a motion by Counselor Columbus. I'm going to turn things to Counselor Columbus because there's been some developments here.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Good morning, County Council. Yes, and I would be happy to move that to discuss a business arising from the minutes. But I would also like to propose that we defer this discussion until after we have addressed the C A O's report on the same topic, which is coming up on the on the agenda.
So Counselor Columbus, you're making a motion to defer until after we deal with the staff report. Is there a second for that motion to defer? That's seconded by Counselor Burley. Any discussion on that motion to defer? Then I'll call the question, is there anyone opposed to that motion to defer? Seeing none, that is carried. So we'll come back to that, Counselor Columbus. Okay, we're on to item number four, we're looking at the consent agenda. Council, is there anything that needs to be pulled, or are we content with things the way they where they are? Counselors, so ever.
Yes, I'd like to pull item G, which is the resolution from the town of the Blue Mountains regarding Gray County Audit of Tax Rules.
I do not see anyone else waving their hand. So with that said, that is going to be moved by Counselor Columbus and second. No, that's sorry, that's the other motion. Oh, I don't have a mover. Yes, I do. Counselor Potter, my, I'm having a hard time reading. It's moved by Counselor Potter and seconded by Counselor Columbus that we approved the consent agenda as presented the one item poll. Is there anyone opposed to that? Seeing none, that is carried. I'll get myself organized here, yeah. Okay, that said, we are now moving on to items for direction and discussion, which is item number six. And we're dealing first of all with item six A, which is the countywide waste management study. Kim is on deck. It is moved by Counselor Burley and seconded by Counselor O'Leary. Kim?
Thanks, Mr. Morton, and good morning, Council. The countywide waste management report before you this morning was prepared in response to discussions held at our last two strategic planning sessions, as well as a notice of motion circulated to all member municipalities by Miford last October. That resolution requested that the county consider the merits of delivering waste collection and disposal at the county level. Owen Sound's support for Miford's request came to council as correspondence on November 12, 2020. At that meeting, council passed Resolution CW20420, directing that staff bring forward a report on considerations related to an assessment on the challenges and opportunities of Gray County, assuming Waste Management Services. As you're all well aware, waste management is a complex matter. And as discussed back in November, in order for council to make an informed decision about an appropriate course of action, a significant amount of information should be available to you. Presently residential waste management and recycling services are mandated by the province and carried out by local municipalities. There are many different arrangements across the province. Some, like us, where the upper tier is not involved. Others, like Simcoe, Wellington, and Dufferin, where the county has responsibility. And others where responsibilities are shared. For example, in Bruce County, lower tiers undertake the waste management collection, et cetera, but hazardous waste and public education are the county's responsibility. With some exceptions, Section 11 of the Municipal Act assigns responsibility for solid waste management to the lower tier. And so in order to change that, the process would require for us a triple majority. The majority of the lower tier councils, the majority of electors, and of course yourselves, County Council. Solid waste management is highly regulated primarily by Ontario Reg 3347, the solid waste management reg under the Environmental Protection Act. In addition, in recent years, the province has provided updated legislation and regulation in response to climate change and environmental concerns. At the provincial and federal level, there are stated goals regarding reduction of waste, diverting waste from landfill, supporting the repair and reuse of materials, et cetera. In October 2016, the Waste Recovery and Circular Economy Act established the outcomes-based producer responsibility regime. And the current provincial government has made in Ontario Environment Plan that commits to producer responsibility for the packaging and waste associated with their products. As well, in 2018, there was a food and organics waste policy statement that provided direction regarding effectively and efficiently collecting and processing food and organic waste and reintegrating recovered resources back into the economy. So all of that to say that this particular service is one that is in a state of change, I think would be fair to say. And we anticipate that there will be more of that as some of this policy then moves its way into being regulation. We did do some consideration of this at Gray County in the new official plan in Section 8.1. We encouraged mandatory waste diversion programs, reducing waste, and working towards the circular economy. So given all of this, a comprehensive feasibility study is what I would recommend to council as the basis for your future decision making. A feasibility study like this would need to examine all of the existing operating arrangements within the county, their service levels, the costs, the system performance, terms of existing contracts, capacity, value of infrastructure, et cetera. It would need to assess options for providing some or all waste management services and infrastructure at the county level, taking into account this regulatory, environmental, economic, and likely social factors as well. I think something like this would require at some stage some extensive public engagement and feedback. Options would be rated not only on cost and potential for savings, but also service quality and efficiency, improved ability to meet waste reduction and diversion targets, including source separated organics, and maximizing the existing capacity that exists within each of the systems. County staff, we've not ever been involved in solid waste management. We don't have the expertise to really do justice to a study like this. Recommend that if we are moving forward, we retain an experienced firm with a team that can look at all facets of these complex systems. They will need time and information from your local staff in order to complete their work. And as I've noted in the report, I estimate that something comprehensive might take six months to complete and could be expected to cost as much as really $250,000 to do properly. As far as sources of funds, again, as noted in the grant, there is the, in the report, I should say, there is the potential to seek grant funding to support some or all of this work. In addition, the county does have some resources to put towards it. We have a waste management reserve that was set up some time ago. It has a projected year-end balance of just over $86,000. We also have a strategic plan review reserve, and that has a projected year-end balance for 2021 of just over $237,000. So that is, that's really the substance of the report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. I see lots of hands. So we'll start with Counselor Potter.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. We would obviously have to hire consultants to do this work for us because we do not have the expertise. We have actually several municipalities that already have lots of expertise in handling waste management. So how much of a role would they play in this? Because I think we should be listening to them very carefully. We should also be looking at where municipalities stand in terms of their sustainability planning. We are already well along with ours, and now we would be throwing a real curveball if we change. If we change the way that we're doing waste management in the county. And finally, those municipalities that have already invested heavily in having up to date and good, well-functioning waste management programs and facilities, would they be given some sort of compensation through either reduced costs or a return rebate of some kind? So there are lots of things that we need to consider beyond just deciding whether or not to do a study. I think, you know, we recently turned down a desire to look into a legal issue because we didn't want to pay for $10,000 to $20,000 estimated for a lawyer. But here, we're willing to spend $250,000 for something that is really not an issue for some of the municipalities in Gray.
Thank you, Counselor Soever.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm just wondering, I'm a little disappointed in that the report doesn't talk about our process for doing this. As you would recall, that back in October, November, when this issue first came up, I asked about the Gray County Collaborative Decision Making Framework. And we were provided with a framework, which I subsequently found wasn't the latest one. And Heather was kind enough to point me to the one that's currently in effect. And I did look that up, and it was approved and adopted by County Council in 2013. Although some of the committees have changed, I think the framework is an excellent one. And I would like to know why we're rushing into a report without following that decision-making framework. The framework is a four-point strategy. We are more or less following the getting started phase, although the getting started phase said that the request from a municipality should have substantiating information with it. I don't I don't know what that really means, but there was nothing really other than the request from Miford. And there is no substantiating information of any kind with it. And now, so the first step getting started was the request comes in. There's a preliminary report, which we're seeing today. And then we consider that, but then it doesn't say go right to a report. The next step is to develop a project charter. And where the county C A O engages with the municipal C A Os is necessary to prepare a draft project charter, which sets out the terms of engagement, including operating principles, objectives, and constraints of the review of the service. For example, service excellence, cost effectiveness, greater efficiency, reducing costs, lessening tax burden, et cetera. And it goes on and on. And I'm reading from, I won't read the whole thing, but it's very comprehensive. And then once the charter is approved by the council, then there is a report on the current state that comes forward. And I think at that point, we would be prepared, you know, to have a report from the consultants. And then there's another report on the desired future state. And at each of these stages, there's very specific criteria and outlines in it. And it would have been useful for the council to have this information because I think it sets out a very prudent course of action. Because as was pointed out, this does require a triple majority. And I think, you know, by having a project charter and following our own collaborative decision-making framework, rather than taking shortcuts, we will have a fulsome discussion and we will end up with a better product. And we won't be putting our taxpayers at risk by, you know, spending $250,000 only to find out that, you know, it didn't have a chance of success in the first place. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, I don't know. When you look at the costs of the service in surrounding counties, for instance, Simcoe County and Dufferin County, if you look at their average costs, and you apply the per household, then you apply that to Gray County, and I would suggest that that's probably conservative because both of those counties have higher population density than we have. Then, you know, it will more than double the cost of waste disposal if we achieve the same cost per household as they do. And because some of our systems are very efficient here, and as Counselor Potter pointed out, there's a large discrepancy. But my main concern at this point is the process. When we you know, vary from our approved processes and procedures, then you know, we put ourselves at risk. And, you know, I would even question, and maybe this is a question for our legal counsel, is if a lower-tier municipality is damaged by the county not following its own process, is there potential liability at the county level for those damages?
Okay, so I think we've got a couple of things on the go here. Perhaps I will allow our C A O to respond to the procedure. I don't know if it's a C A O or perhaps the clerk, but there are several things in there.
I can speak to this, if you will. First of all, the 2013 Collaborative Decision Making Framework is just that, it's a roadmap. It's not a formal policy or a procedure, nor was it adopted by bylaw. So I think some excellent work went into the creation of that document. And certainly, it would inform our thinking going forward. The intent, as stated in my report, was that to move forward, we know that we would need expert advice and guidance. The intent would be to R F P that expert advice and guidance. Every one of the proposals that we received would be evaluated against their approach to undertaking a scope of work. Talked, I've talked about the fact that your staff at the lower tier and their expertise would be critical to informing the outcome and the final product of the consultant's work. So it is certainly, it's not my intent to deviate from, I think, the objectives of that service delivery evaluation process that was laid out. I think that we will be covering all of those excellent points that are in there as this work proceeds, if council so wishes. The challenge that we face, though, is that our ability to undertake this work without outside resources is extremely limited. So if we want to move forward, I think we do need to decide when we want to do this and commit to providing the resources to be able to complete it in a, to a, you know, the high level that we'll all need to be able to make a decision.
Thank you very much. Counselor Soever, is there anything else you wanted to add before I move on? You're muted.
No, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Counselor Robinson. And before you start, Counselor Robinson, I would just say that, remind everyone what we're discussing here. We're receiving a report, and staff is asking for direction. That may come in the form of a motion by Counselor Columbus, I'm assuming. But for now, we are just really discussing this report and attempting to give staff some direction. So Counselor Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you, I'll just lower my hand here. I am seeking clarity with regard to the report, and thank you for the comprehensive report. On page three of your report, and also on page four, under the heading Scope of Work, would that, in the first bullet, also include the waste management plans within the existing member municipalities? So that, and I see it's clearly defined in terms of operations, policies, procedure, asset management, infrastructure, all of that, but within the existing operational plans and that are current and also the projected operations for the member municipalities in the future, would that also be a consideration? And just to add on to that, under Options for Providing Some or All of the Waste Management Services, it's the second last bullet in the Scope of Work, would there also be consideration on that final checkmark? It has recycling and organics. Would there be an opportunity to include plastic film fiber, which is clothing, and any other option to divert this type of material in our landfill? Thank you very much.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. Again, I think we'd be relying on our consultants to provide the most comprehensive assessment possible. And so that would definitely mean looking at both past practice, as well as all of the future planning and record-keeping reporting that each of your municipalities has having to undertake with regard to the systems that you currently operate. As far as the recycling and waste diversion, that's an important goal for all of us. And having the expertise to look at what the potential is, what it would cost to enhance systems to be able to gather, sort, and whether it's reuse or otherwise make use of those materials. But getting them out of the landfill site is certainly something that we would want people to be looking carefully at.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Counselor Burley next, but Counselor Potter, I do see your hand. Was your question with respect to the issue raised by Counselor Robinson?
Yes, I think so, in that I was going to ask, would we be working entirely with the existing facilities or looking at potential for new facilities?
I'm C A O.
I don't think we would have the answer to that. I think that that would be part of what the consultant would need to consider when they were making their recommendations back to us with regard to the most efficient, effective way to proceed. They'll have to consider all of those options, I think. Certainly, what existing capacity exists would play into that for sure.
Thank you very much. Counselor Burley, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I know all county council knows, but I've been around these chambers for a good number of years. This topic has come up several times. We've sort of basically looked at and put on shelf. I'm a firm believer in the C A O's report, and I fully support hiring consultants to try and get us all the information we need to make a proper decision on waste management, recycling, everything else. I think it's extremely important that we follow this through. We do have an opportunity, maybe go through the moderation fund to get that money. It's just that every time we discuss this, it never comes to a conclusion, and I'd love to see a final conclusion on it. My question to the C A O or clerk would be, this is going to take a long time. I think you're being very, past six months, I don't think it'd be enough time to get all the information that's going to be required by a consultant. It could very well take up a year. My question is that since it's going to be a long time to get this report done, and we are getting close to our end of our council term. My question is, lean duck situation in 2022, believe it or not, it's going to come sooner than later. Do we, you feel that we have enough time, if we do react on this soon, to be able to get that back to our, the report back, and then have our trip on the early boat and all that stuff? It just seems like the timeframe is very limited. That's my question.
And clerk?
There we go. It will depend on how quickly the report is complete and the turnaround time for local councils to review the resolution from the county and provide their support or not related to that. Sometimes the turnaround time at local councils is quite quick, and sometimes it does take some time, especially with an in-depth topic like this. So I understand that October of next year is coming. So I can't say for sure whether we would meet that timeframe or not.
Okay, I don't see any other hands. So Madam Clerk, I wonder if you might offer some?
I do. I have Counselor McQueen, Counselor Body, Counselor Millen.
So if I may go, Mr. Warden?
Sorry, just one quick second, Deputy Warden. We are dealing, I hear some other voice typing in. If everyone could mute, that would be appreciated. So Madam C A O, in terms of process here, we have a motion that we are dealing with right now, which is to receive this report and to give direction. I'm well aware that Counselor Columbus has an intention to bring a motion with respect to this. I'm just looking for your guidance on how we proceed. Is this the time that we entertain Counselor Columbus's motion and take it to discussion with respect to that?
Would you like me to?
Yes, please, Heather.
Through you, Mr. Warden, it would be my recommendation that we're really, the C A O's report is for information purposes in order to provide counsel with a an encompassing piece of information prior to discussing the notice of motion by Counselor Columbus. So if you're looking for something, it would be my recommendation, actually, that we just receive it for information. And the direction will come from the notice of motion on where counsel decides to move with that. So that's my recommendation.
Okay, so with that said, then, I will go through the Deputy Warden, Counselors Body and Millen, and then perhaps put the vote, put it to a vote on receiving, and then entertain Counselor Columbus's motion thereafter. Okay, Deputy Warden McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Can you hear me okay?
Perfectly.
Okay, just a couple of points for discussion. And I may reach out to Counselor Millen to maybe follow up. I know back, I don't know if it was the late 2000s, the county was looking at this. And we had a tour that included the lower-tier counselors of Simcoe County. And I know that because Mr. Millen even drove the bus. Who took us on a tour of Simcoe County. So I'm just, I know it was a good exercise, and we looked at Simcoe County and what they were doing, because it was a countywide system. And I, my one point, I wonder if there's an opportunity, I know it's with COVID right now, we can't do that tour. But I wonder if we could have, in the future of County Council, have a spokesperson from maybe Simcoe County or even Wellington, just to sort of, you know, have an opportunity to sort of listen to what's good, what's bad, what's ugly, what's really working well, to sort of give us that opportunity to at least hear that side. Also, I do want to say that I know from our municipality, and I think others, hazardous waste has been something that has been an issue. And it's interesting that the C A O has mentioned that Bruce County has looked at, after that, is from the county perspective. So I think that's an interesting thing. And I think we're hearing more and more. And I think we're hearing more and more about organics. Our, I know South Kate has picked up organics, I'm not sure what other municipalities are doing organics. And I know that has been, you know, they have suggested that that could be up to 50% of your waste could be, or more, or whatever that number is, could be part of your, you know, your landfill. And is there a way to divert that? And maybe, you know, what I'm saying, Mr. Warden, you know, maybe there's a hybrid here too, or there's a working process of looking at the things that the lower tiers aren't doing or can't do at this point. And maybe there's a system upscale that would work for that. Also, I think around the discussion around climate change and diversion and recycling and, you know, with plastics or something has become, I think Counselor Robinson has sort of mentioned a little bit about that. I think that's something that, you know, and where with climate change, where are we going? And where is that going with the waste and landfill? And, you know, I know that municipalities of Georgian Bluff and Chatsworth have a biodigester that's in play, and is there ways of, I know when that first started, that was looked upon as taking waste and other stuff like that. And I would like to hear a little bit more of an update on that. That's something that's in Gray County in the sense, does that help us? Does the county help them, you know? And so there's just some points that I'm raising, Mr. Warden, in the sense of thinking ahead and possibility. I think we, you know, I first saw this, I thought, hmm, well, I know some, a lot of the municipalities didn't respond. But I think if we move through in a process that sort of is more information collecting and talking more about where we're going to be. And we know that there's a whole change with the recycling part with by 2025 and the Blue Box program, and what's that going to look like and how that's rolling out. And, you know, that keeps changing all the time. And I'm sort of partly on an AMO executive meeting today as well. And I know that we're talking about that, continuing to talk about that at AMO as well. That keeps, keeps changing, you know, and that, you know. So anyway, those are just some points I'm throwing out there, Mr. Warden, in the sense of I think we do have to think about the bigger picture and, you know, what that looks like. I know from a lower-tier standpoint, there's a lot of municipalities that have invested a lot of money into their waste management, their waste diversion, all that stuff, and how that looks moving forward. I guess that's something that we would have to look at. But I'm thinking more, you know, on the climate change and diversion, and maybe there's a hybrid. Anyway, I'll leave those comments to everyone. Thank you. You're muted.
We're all learning, aren't we? Madam CEO, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
No, I think those are all excellent points.
Okay, excellent. Counselor Boddy, you're next.
I want to thank Counselor McQueen for reading my script. He hit on like gratefully what Counselor Robinson have said already. I think these are one of these things that we need to think long-term. A lot of municipalities are set right now, and maybe on some, a couple of us aren't, you know, in a perfect condition right now. But in the long run, what's the province going to enforce on us as they try to divert waste from landfill sites? What are we going to be required to do? How expensive is that going to be, organics and those types of things? Is there an opportunity to do it together? And I think there probably is. So I think this is, this may take a few months to get done, but we're really thinking on a 20, 30-year plan here, thinking long-term of where we're going to have to get to for all of us, and is there a way of doing it together? And, you know, just the information that would come, even if we don't get to that point that we do it together, collecting the information that's going to affect all of us that are around this horseshoe sort of, you know, it will be of benefit, I think. But I'm hoping that we can put together a program that is county-wide or even twin-county-wide at some point, but I think the report's important. It's that first step in long-term planning and thinking. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Millen, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good report, Madam CEO. Lots to think about there. I'm just, as I think I maybe mentioned before, or before I say that, or before I go further, I will confirm that, yes, Mr. McQueen, I did drive that bus, and we did sing the song, "The Wheels on the Bus Go Round and Round." Yes, we did. Yes, we did. I don't think any alcohol was involved, but we did sing that song. Anyway, to my question, the county did do a very extensive report many years ago, and I can't recall when that was, but I'm going to say back in the 80s. And I think it was a million dollars then. Does that report, while it still exists, but is it sitting on a shelf somewhere? It might be, I mean, it's way out of date, of course, but it might be instructive to read that report or have it at least available to county counselors to hit the high points of what was looked into then. And it might be instructive to at least have that report available to see what the issues were then. And I, as Counselor Boddy has said, this is a long-term project, and there may well be some gems of information in that last report that would be instructive now.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you, and I really appreciate such a detailed report, Madam CEO, and also the discussion that we're having here at county. There's definitely merit in the feasibility study, and I certainly can get behind that, having the knowledge and being able to assess through an expert, I think, is most important at this time. Many of our member municipalities have declared climate crisis, and I think this is just one opportunity as we sit around the county virtual horseshoe that we're able to address climate change and how can we improve our current situation. So I'm most in favor of the feasibility study. And I just draw your attention, County Council. We will need to do, Mr. Warden, I believe, on the item number two in the recommendation that council directs staff regarding next steps. So I think there's also an activity that we need to do within this particular report prior to going to the, you notice a motion from Counselor Clumpus. So I'm just seeking clarification on that as well. But certainly, the support for this feasibility study is most important. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson. I'm following Madam Clerk. It looks like the direction that staff is seeking will come from the discussion we'll have about Counselor Clumpus's motion. So I'm going to invite a vote on just to receive the staff report for now. I believe that will be followed by Counselor Clumpus's motion, which will get us into giving staff direction.
Thank you.
So can I, oh, I have Counselor Potter.
Just a clarification, would we be able to set an upset limit on the costs? We're being told 250,000, so whatever it is that we want to commit to this, because I don't see that in the notice of motion. So if we're giving staff direction as a result of this report, then we may want to include any limit on costs in that. I just wonder what would be the appropriate?
So, that's a good point. I think it can either be raised by the mover and seconder, or it can be something that you suggest to the mover and seconder if they don't include it in the motion. But we're back on just a motion to receive for right now. So if there are no other comments, I'm going to invite, I'm going to call the question on the motion to receive. Is there anyone opposed? That is carried. All right, so Counselor Clumpus, I will now turn to you if you wish to bring your motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden.
I'm sorry, we do just need the motion put on the floor, so I think you do have a mover and a seconder before the discussion.
Yes, I did agree that I would be happy to move this motion.
Okay, and that is seconded by Counselor Carlton. Okay, Counselor Clumpus, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and thank you, everyone, particularly CEO Kim Wingriff for such a detailed report and to bring this issue forward at this time. I think it's a, it's a critical point in time for us since it has been discussed in our strategic priorities, but also for all of the factors that many of you have mentioned in this discussion already. It really does impact a lot of the issues that we are all facing individually as well as through Gray County. My intent here was simply to respond to the, an opportunity presented by the province for funding of this, of a project similar to this. And it seemed to me that the criteria or the suggestions for priorities fit this project immensely. And as we talk about it, and with all of your very excellent suggestions coming forward, there's a lot more to this than simply waste reduction and collection and dispersal. So from that perspective, we don't know what the financial contribution might be, should we be accepted as a project here. And I think what I was looking for, because there's no indication of what, if there's a percentage of cost or a full cost recovery, there's more to be, more information to be had here. So the motion before us now, I think, is simply to to take advantage of this second intake of the municipal modernization program to allow us to benefit from this provincial funding, to have a look at a feasibility study, to hire an outside, a third-party consultant group to come in and take a look at all of the questions that have been raised here today. It's been an excellent, excellent discussion. There's a lot to think about. All relevant thoughts and discussions going forward continue with respect to not only waste diversion, organics using current facilities that we already have capacity, we already have like the biodigester. There's just a huge opportunity here, I think, to seek some provincial funding for something that could really benefit each and every one of our lower-tier municipalities as well as Gray County as a whole. So this motion going forward, and happy to entertain an upset, excuse me, an upset limit, excuse me, for costing. Obviously, as I've mentioned, there has been no indication of what the level of financial commitment the province is prepared to offer for these types of projects. But it seems to me that an application to meet their deadline and outlining the, you know, the compatibility with their priorities would be a pretty good indication of what kind of funding we could expect. And at that time, then, a decision could be made further for next steps and going ahead. So with that, I just wanted to thank everybody for your comments, all excellent ideas and thoughts on this, on this topic. And I hope to see how we go further with this and how we really can work together as a county and individually as well. A hybrid was indicated, and that's certainly something that could be included in this feasibility study as well. So thank you all, and I will leave the motion stands unless someone, unless we want to add an upset limit of financial contribution at our part. We just don't have any idea, I guess, of what that would be. But thank you all, and we'll see how it goes.
Thank you, Counselor Clumpus. Madam Clerk, before I move to Counselor Potter, whose hand I see next, the way I read the motion as it appears is that we are directing staff to make an application for modernization funding. Am I correct to read, Counselor Clumpus, or do you maybe want to address this? Am I correct to read that if we are not successful at receiving the modernization funding, that you would want it funded anyways? Or is it your motion, is the intention of your motion that we simply apply for the modernization funding? If we don't get it, then we don't do it?
The intention of my motion, Mr. Warden, thank you, was simply to apply for the funds to see if we would be successful in accessing provincial funds to get this, this program started, because still an opportunity at that time to decide whether we want to move forward with financial contributions from county and from the lower tiers.
So by way of your motion, and again, Madam Clerk, you see where I'm getting at. By way of your motion, you are simply asking that staff apply for the modernization funds. If they receive it, then they would obviously proceed with the the report that's been brought. But if we do not receive that funding, it ends there.
Mr. Warden?
I'm CEO.
Going, Steph, I had the opportunity to undertake some further investigation with regard to what Transfer Payment Ontario was prepared to provide for the second round of municipal modernization funding. So when you actually delve into the guidelines that are there, they suggest that they're prepared to support projects. In one place, it says 150,000. In another place, it says 250,000. The provincial contribution is determined based on population, and at the Gray County population level, they would be willing to support up to 65% of the cost of the project. While they're asking for applications to be provided to them by March 15th, they don't intend to make a decision until sometime in May. And the report itself, the final report, whatever the outcome of the work is, needs to be provided back to the province by November. So if we wanted to use the municipal modernization funding to support this work, I think what I'd need to do is to divide it up so that we used municipal modernization for some sort of preliminary, whether that was to help us develop the full scope of our assessment and catalog information, some of the groundwork that would be necessary for the larger, more comprehensive project. I think you could use municipal modernization for that if they accept it. The full, after further analyzing, though, what municipal modernization is prepared to provide and the timelines that they're asking that projects are completed under, and given the discussion this morning, which seems to be more along the lines, if you're going to do this, we really need to look at the full scope. I don't think that we're going to have enough, enough time or sufficient support there to cover all of our needs only through municipal modernization.
Understood. Thank you for that clarification. So Counselor Potter, I believe you're next.
Well, my intent is just that we, you know, somebody mentioned that these studies can run into millions pretty quickly. We've all seen waste management studies before that have gotten away like a runaway train. And I just want to be sure that we contain the costs of this and don't let it become an albatross around our necks. So I would just want to have some sort of, perhaps it could be that that the funding would be limited to the amount available from the grant. And it's 65% of the project cost. So if we are successful in getting that 65%, then we would be prepared to go ahead. But I'm getting a little bit of a mixed message, I think, and maybe the CIO could clarify whether she's saying that the scope of this work might be too big to expect to take on this funding. And, you know, so we're already talking about perhaps expanding the funding sources. So I just want to be sure that we're not dragging ourselves into something that's going to turn into a big problem in the long run, that we have some sort of cap.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I wouldn't want to confuse this project, which is meant I I wouldn't want to um confuse this project, which is meant to um undertake. An assessment um that can be scoped. I um and cost controlled, I think, more effectively than um some other waste management projects. For example, doing um site selections and that sort of thing. We're familiar with those projects and. You know, the fact that they can really take on a life of their own. I don't think that's where we are with this. We're simply trying to um look at information that currently exists. And provide, taking an assessment of that and then provide a report back to council for your consideration. Having said that, I am concerned like. Until we go out with the RFP, we won't know um how many consulting firms are available to do this work. And what timeline those consultants are available to us on. Um, so, you know, even to put something out on the street. So um with the idea that we could then choose someone, but contingent on on getting approval. Even then, they're not going to be able to start at the earliest. Anybody going to be able to start is June. And I given that the summertime and the need for um member municipal staff contributions and considerations about that. I I am just concerned that um this funding, it won't be sufficient. But we certainly can um scope something to um to to put an application in and see where that takes us.
Uh, Counselor Mackey, you're next.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, uh and thanks, Kim, for your report. You know, this is certainly, you know, as has been mentioned by other members, a complex issue. I'm struggling a little bit with it, and I certainly agree with Counselor Potter that. You know, an upside limit would certainly need to be, you know, talked about here. I'm not not convinced that we would be able to achieve a triple majority. And I would hate to spend too much money, um you know, locally, uh if we're not able to achieve that. So so that is a huge concern if we don't have a an upside. Uh I think the information would be valuable. I'm not convinced that a countywide system is a way to go. I think partnerships between member municipalities is a better way to go. Uh we've already achieved some of those in the, you know, we work with Gray Highlands for our our ways to, you know, our our curbside pickup. Uh we have our partnership with uh Georgian Bluffs for the biodigester. Um, you know, I think Counselor McQueen asked about it. Uh both Georgian Bluffs and Chatsworth right now have uh. Put out an RFP and we have a a consulting firm that is looking at the uh the overall operations of the biodigester and the lagoon system. So we will be able to report back to council on what those recommendations are as moving forward. We've certainly learned that source separate organics is the uh the best material for the biodigester, so. Uh we're just looking how to best uh move forward with that facility and uh. I think, you know, other partner municipalities would certainly be welcome to come to the table for that. But, you know, with the the vast geography, I'm not sure Southgate would want to be involved. So taking this on as a county, I just think we're better off looking at it uh with member municipalities and partnerships that way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Soever, you're next. You're muted. There you go. I can hear you.
Um, the, I'm I'm a bit confused here because people are talking about upset limits and everything. And as I read, the resolution is written here, we're only asking for. To give staff direction to apply for funding. There's nothing here in. As it's written, to authorize an RFP or anything else. It just says. To submit an expression of interest to the Transport Payment Ontario System by March fifteenth. To access the funding. And um so, I'm a bit confused as to what we're talking about here. Um we chose in the last uh motion to just merely receive the CAO's report. And we we were mute on giving direction as to how to proceed forward on the feasibility study. And I think as written, this resolution is mute on that as well. So I just like some clarity here. Um it seems that. Um, we're having a lot of discussion about how we're going to proceed. But there's nothing in this resolution that gives direction to proceed other than to apply for the funding.
Um, perhaps I could go to, I I see your hand, Kim, but perhaps I can go to Madam Clerk. Um, because I think the Counselor Soever is quite right that there is. You know, the body, the language in the motion as it exists. I think it's probably open for uh this council to um to give further direction, whether it's with respect to uh placing a cap. Or whether it's with respect to saying proceed uh with the with the undertaking and a an assessment. Um, uh that is not yet on the floor, but that can happen, Madam Clerk.
You're absolutely correct, Mr. Warden. Um, the the resolution directs staff to submit an expression of interest. Um to the Transfer Payment Ontario System um for the purpose of hiring a consultant to assess the feasibility. And it will be dependent on the um whether that is awarded or not to the county. Um, what next steps we take. And as far as an amendment, if someone wants to make an amendment to the motion to set an an upset limit on the cost. Should we be successful and should we move forward with this? That is an amendment and totally um appropriate to be put on the floor.
And it would be also an amendment uh to add uh that staff uh proceed uh with the um. Uh to undertake an assessment uh as well, correct?
If that's council's wish that they, if we're successful, we we jump right into proceeding. Um, that is, that is direction that um council can provide to staff.
Okay, thank you, uh Madam CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I I think a comment that I made earlier was that if you wish to proceed with the municipal modernization application. Will likely need to scope the request to take on a portion of this work. Because you will not get the full feasibility study in a four-month window. With an upset limit of what whatever they're prepared to give us. And as I say, their own documentation is not clear. In one place, it says a hundred and fifty, in another, it says two hundred and fifty. So if you want to make application to municipal modernization as a first step. I can take that direction and I can work on something um that would be appropriate. Uh for that level of funding in that timeframe. If you are more uh committed than that, if you want to see um a full feasibility study. Then I think that we would then would start the work to develop what that scope of work would look like. And prepare the request for proposal uh that would need to go out to find out what the market would provide to that.
Okay, so it strikes me, based on your comments, Madam Clerk, uh um. Based on the CAO's comments, that there are really two questions here. One is, do we wish staff to uh undertake uh an assessment? Uh, that's one question and and perhaps putting an upper limit to that. And question number two would be, uh do we want staff to make the application for the modernization funding? Uh, that strikes me as two separate things. They can both happen at the same time, but they are two separate things. I think Counselor Soever, that's the point he's making. And currently, all we have uh as a question is, should staff apply for the modernization funding? If it is the wish that somebody have a discussion about, should we proceed with the um with the assessment? Uh, then I think that needs to be added as an amendment, correct? Madam Clerk.
If council's looking to um direct staff to do more than apply, which is what this resolution says. Then that would need to be an amendment.
Okay, good. So so far, we're just dealing with uh, we're having discussion about whether. Uh staff will apply for the modernization funding. Nothing else is on the table yet. So with that said, I'm going to go to uh Counselor Millen, then I'll go to Potter and Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh it it just strikes me that the motion as it's written, as it's presented. Quite readily asks counsel, do you want to apply for this funding? And I have no problems uh supporting that motion to apply for the funding. I think then, wouldn't we get an answer back from the ministry that says, yes, you've got funding and this is the amount we're willing to to give you? Then we know. We can go from there and then scope what we can get for that amount of funding. Or do we want to put more money into the pot of our own to go the full feasibility step? And ask for an RFP, and then at that point, you're going to know, well, this is what it's going to cost you. Do you want to go ahead, or do you want to go back, or do you want to stop? I I I don't think an amendment at this point to determine whether we're actually going to go right to the end of the street is appropriate. I think we need to uh do what the motion asks, apply for the funding, see how much we get. Decide then, what do we want to do with it? Do we want to spend that amount, put more in the money or more in the pot and carry on or or not? Um, I I think we're we're getting ahead of ourselves here.
Okay, thank you, sir. Counselor Potter.
Thank you, Warden. Uh, Counselor Millen actually just clarified what I've been asking all along, is what are we actually asking for? Uh, and uh are we just asking that we. Be part of this program, uh no amounts attached to it and and no work scope attached to it. Just, we are going to be part of it and here's what we are eligible for. And we decide from there what we're going to do, but uh to say that we're just going to give. Permission to go ahead and ask for something without, in a tight timeline, without any real knowledge of what we're actually asking for. That was the confusing part. So thank you, Counselor Millen. You just clarified everything, and you can drive a bus.
Okay, next, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden, and and very, very simply, I think I can support this motion that we're only looking for modernization funding. But it'll then come back and we'll have a much better idea of what the uh uh contribution from Gray County would be if we want to go ahead. So uh I'm certainly content with the motion as it stands right now and have that brought back to us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and Counselor Soever. We lose Counselor Soever?
He's on mute.
Sorry, um, yes, I too am prepared to support this motion. As it's written, um but I would, it it does in the uh beginning. Say that this will be done within the framework of Gray County's collaborative decision-making framework. But that isn't in the um. In the resolution at the bottom. So I would like to propose a friendly amendment that after, in order to hire a consultant. That'd be within the framework of the county agrees collaborative decision-making framework.
So Counselor Soever, I don't think we're there yet. I think we simply have a motion at this point uh to apply for the modernization funding.
Well, I know, and and that's what I want in that motion uh in, it's a friendly amendment, just for clarity. Because I see Counselor, uh the mover has put that in the um the first whereas. But it's not in the um the resolution itself, so I was just proposing that as a friendly amendment.
I I, well, I'm going to go to our uh clerk. I don't think that that is necessary. I think simply we have a motion. That's my feeling anyways. We we simply have a motion to apply for modernization funding at this point. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Um, I would agree that this motion strictly is to apply for the funding. And um. If we are successful with the funding, then um we would determine sort of the next steps. It is simply just to apply for the funding.
Right. So as I said previously, uh you know, people are welcome to bring further motions if they choose to. I don't see anyone raising their hands to do that. So the only thing before us right now is to apply for the modernization funding, period. Uh, so maybe this is a time to put that uh question to a vote. Because I don't see any other uh hands for discussion. That said. And is there anyone opposed uh to the motion to apply for the modernization funding?
Mr. Warden, uh given the lack of clarity on how the consultant's going to be hired, um I will have to oppose, and I'd like a recorded vote, please.
So be it.
Okay, um, so you're voting on the motion? Counselor Mackey.
You're muted.
Counselor Mackey.
Sorry, Mr. Warden. I just have one further question after Counselor Soever's uh comment there. We're not voting on hiring a consultant today. We are only voting on applying for modernization funding. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Mackey.
In favor.
Counselor Gamble.
In favor.
Counselor Burley.
In favor.
Counselor Carlton.
In favor.
Counselor McQueen.
In favor.
Counselor Little.
In favor.
Counselor Patterson.
In favor.
Warden Hicks.
Yay.
Counselor Columbus.
In favor.
Counselor Keveney.
In favor.
Counselor Boddy.
In favor.
Counselor O'Leary.
In favor.
Counselor Woodbury.
In favor.
Counselor Millen. Counselor Soever.
Opposed.
Counselor Potter.
In favor.
Counselor Robinson.
In favor.
Counselor Hutchinson.
In favor.
Motion is carried eighty-three to seven.
Thank you. Okay, and I don't believe that we have any other uh motions following uh that. Which brings us next. Uh why don't we, we've been sitting how long now? Why don't we take a short break, uh folks, and come back? Um, should I suggest to say ten minutes? Is that nod your head if ten minutes is sufficient? Okay, so then we'll come back at five minutes to uh the hour, five minutes to eleven. Want to mute your mics and shut off your video, please? Want to mute your mics and shut off your video, please?
Who is that masked man?
We're back, are we? Okay, it looks like we have a quorum, Madam Clerk. We have a few still to join. But we do have a quorum. So you know what? I think I'm going to get us, uh, uh, rolling here. We're on to, uh, Rob, are we good to go?
Yep, we're still live, Mr. Warden. So you can go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you very much. So we're on to item six B now, uh, which is the Social Services Relief Fund update. Anne Marie is on deck. Uh, this is moved by Counselor Patterson and seconded by Counselor Robinson. Anne Marie?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. Um, this report is an update on our social services relief funds. Uh, these funds were provided by the province to assist community agencies that support people experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness, uh, with COVID-19 expenses. The funds were to provide supports through the pandemic and into the recovery phase. At this time, we have fully funded or allocated, um, all of our social services relief fund. Uh, there is a chart on page forty-nine, uh, that points out the, uh, funding for Phase One. Which is in two million, two-point-three million dollars. And it lists the various agencies and initiatives that we were provided funding to. Uh, the Phase One funding has allowed our community agencies to meet the challenges that COVID has brought. Um, through the need for PPE, um, cleaning, extra cleaning or signage. Uh, through physical changes that might have been need to buildings or offices or congregate settings. Um, we've had an increase in our residents that have been accessing various food programs. Uh, we've an increase in the number and length of people using our emergency short-term housing. And we've had an increase in cost of emergency short-term housing. We have, uh, provided an additional three outreach workers, um, one through the, or two, one, two through, um, Y Housing. And one to the Canadian Mental Health Association in order to keep up with increased demands of services. And we've used these funds to, uh, fill in some of the gaps that, uh, agencies had been experiencing in, in trying to provide services. On page fifty, there's a chart outlining the Social Services Relief Fund Phase Two. We've received additional funds from the province in, in the amount of, um, one-point-two million dollars. Um, the Social Services Relief Fund, the capital component. Uh, there are a number of initiatives that we funded through that in order to renovate buildings. And also there was some more info, more funding that came through in order for us to provide, um, some much-needed, the much-needed, um, additional positions. Um, we do have a few concerns. Um, obviously, these funds run until the end of March. Um, we have been able to extend some of those funds, um, a, a few months in order to get us through to the fall. Uh, but we do have two, um, areas of concern. Our emergency short-term housing program, once again, is seeing an increased need. And of course, longer stays, uh, and also our, um, program that provides, um, twenty-four-hour supports for people that may need them, how the housing with related supports. Uh, they did see an increase in the people accessing their services because of, um, taking people coming from hospital. So right now, um, due to that twenty-five percent increase, uh, we are looking at probably seeing, um, uh, an overage in funds in the fall and into, um, winter months. Um, our current community homelessness prevention initiative funds that we receive, um, are not going to be enough to cover this. We have communicated this need to the province and we're waiting to see if there will be additional funding through the remaining, um, COVID months.
Okay, thank you, Council. Any questions? Yes, seeing none. This is a motion just to receive the report. Uh, so I'll call the question. Is there anyone opposed to receiving the report? That is carried. And thank you very much, Anne Marie. Next, we'll deal with item six C. Which is the Investment Plan for Community Homelessness Prevention Initiative. And Josh is on deck. Is moved by Counselor Robinson and seconded by Counselor Hutchinson. Uh, Josh?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Warden and members of the Canadian Council. The report I have for you today is our investment plan for the Community Homelessness Prevention Initiative. And this is the yearly funding allocation that we receive from the province in order to assist households who are at risk or experiencing homelessness. So, uh, we're asking you to endorse this plan. And this program provides us with a very flexible use of funding, which is one of the benefits of this program. It allows us to meet all the community needs that we have across the large geographic area that is Gray County. I'm going to highlight, you've got the full chart of the planned funding, but I'm going to highlight the three major changes from last year. We've decreased the budget for our sustainable housing benefit this year, and I'm going to talk about that, uh, further down in the report. We've added in under the Community Relations Worker, eighty-seven thousand dollars. And that's a position that would serve Gray County housing tenants to help them maintain their tendencies. And there's a new line for the homelessness response table, which is for the creation of a by names list. Which would be prioritizing chronically homeless individuals. One of the largest parts of our Chippy budget is the housing-related supports piece. We fund five residences that provide rental accommodations, daily supports for living, uh, laundering and meds, those types of things. And we support an average of seventy residents a month through that program. Our sustainable housing benefit has been a staple through Chippy, uh, since its very beginning. We saw a significant decrease in twenty-twenty, and this was as a result of the pandemic. Um, everything that we've heard in the community where we get those applications from. People were provided with support measures such as served this year, and there was other cost reductions that were available. In addition, our Social Services Relief Fund provided rental and utility arrears to people that experienced income loss as a result of the pandemic. So we did spend less in that, uh, this year. It allowed us to make up a loss that we had in the emergency shelter piece, which we saw a very significant increase in. Uh, for twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two, we're expecting that to go back to normal levels. So we've budgeted for four hundred thousand. Uh, as I mentioned, we're looking at the addition of a Community Relations Worker for Gray County Housing. And this is a support worker to help people maintain their tendencies and build partnership opportunities with community partners. Uh, we're seeing a significant increase in the number of tenants that require supports, um, whether it be aging in their apartments or, uh, mental health supports, uh, so that worker is going to allow us to better support our tenants and, and protect the investment in our properties as well. We've been partnered with the Y for a very long time. They provide a twenty-four-hour emergency shelter in partnership with two-on-one. In twenty-twenty, they provided five hundred, sorry, five thousand seventy nights of accommodations to over seven-hundred-and-fifty households. And that's available, uh, by way of partnerships with various motels and other housing accommodations across the region. That allow people to obtain housing closest to where they're at. We fund, uh, Safe and Sound, In Own Sound, for their space and evening drop-in center. Uh, as a result of the pandemic, we were able to provide them with some additional dollars this year to act as a warming center in the evening for the winter months. Uh, because as everywhere was closing their doors to prevent the spread, uh, there was a need for the homelessness community to have an opportunity to get out of the cold, and they were able to step up and meet that need with a little bit of financial support. The new addition of the thirty-five thousand dollars budgeted for this year is a joint project for the homelessness response table with Bruce County. And we funded a Housing Systems Navigator with Canadian Mental Health Association. And what she'll be doing is being the lead coordinator for our housing response table and by names list. So, the by names list is a prioritized list of chronically homeless individuals across the region. They'd be referred to that Housing Systems Navigator for prioritization. And then with the housing support table, what we would do is we would match a vacancy in unit with the person in need. And the support services required to allow them to have a really successful tenancy. Uh, because the number one goal, uh, for us is providing a long-term successful tenancy, not just providing somebody with the bricks and mortar. But allowing them to remain in that home and, and giving them the supports they need. And the very last thing that we provide with Chippy is our community enhancement program. And these are, uh, to fund small nonprofit organizations, uh, because Gray County is so large. We partner with a lot of small organizations so that we can provide services in the small communities, uh, across the region. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Council, are there any questions here?
I see Counselor Millen and Counselor Robinson.
Yes, I saw Counselor Robinson first. So Counselor Robinson, go right ahead.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and through you. I very much appreciate this, uh, this detailed report. Um, I was wondering if you could, um, uh, Josh, explain, um, an individual that, um, experiences a fire and, uh, the principal home, uh, the primary home is, um, no longer uh, available to reside in. Could you just, um, identify the, the steps that individual would take in order to, um, hopefully not find themselves in a homelessness situation for, um, a large period of time? And what other programs, uh, or, or what other individuals are, um, can explain, uh, the, um, opportunities to the individual once this tragedy has taken place? Thank you.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Warden. Uh, there is a table called the Plan Table that tries to meet that need. Anytime that there's an emergency that requires somebody to be displaced from their home. Uh, if there's no insurance, we have some financial opportunities to be able to. If there's no insurance, we have some financial opportunities to be able to provide them short-term shelter while we help them locate long-term solutions. That would go through our, if needed, it would go through our YMCA Emergencies, Short-Term Emergency Shelter Program that we partner with them for. But the Plan Table is initiated by Victim Services when emergency services is on site, providing those referrals. So they would set them up short-term, and then we try and find out that they have things like insurance and how far is that going to cover. And there is a bit of a legacy fund through that table with the United Way from the fires that occurred in Owen Sound some time ago that was raised. So right now, it's a collaborative table that really looks at trying to provide as much support as possible, but I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson. Counselor Millen, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Josh, for your report. I wanna go back to the county Community Relations Worker. And you say in your report there, you've mentioned it, significant increase in the number of tenants require supports such as aging and place mental health supports to remain housed. And it's all good. But I'm wondering, when does this program start to tip over into assisted living as we would normally think of it? And do our staff have enough resources to continue down this path, so to speak?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the question. So the Community Relations Worker doesn't do a lot of support in the home, providing that hands-on support. It's mostly referrals to community agencies that exist that do specialize in that type of work. So we're not providing cares for people or being that kind of counseling support that they would require. But we're there to try and discuss with them what the needs are, identify any concerns. Because perhaps what the person's experiencing is a concern that's impacting our units, and then we have to protect our investment. And by working with them, we can try and maintain their tenancy plus our investment in the property.
Okay, that's, that's good. It's not an easy task, I'm sure, so thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. Clerk, if that's the case, then I think we're ready to call the question. Is there anyone opposed to the motion? To receive? I guess and adopt the plan. No one opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Josh. We're on to item sixteen now. We have Brian Plumstead on the deck. We are dealing with the wayfinding signage policy, moved by Counselor Carlton and seconded by Counselor Kivony. Brian, you're on.
Well, thank you very much, Warden Hicks, and good morning, County Council. Thank you, and it's a pleasure to bring to you our wayfinding signage policy this morning. Very much a collaborative effort between the Transportation Services Department and the Tourism Department. And really, it's been under information for many years, as some of you might know. A lot of the signage within the plan and the policy have actually been in place. And we finally pulled it all together into a policy and are bringing that to you this morning. So I'd just like to start out by saying that wayfinding is really how we orient ourselves in space and navigate to destinations. So while we're talking about signage, certainly our maps, our brochures are part of wayfinding as well. And certainly, cell phones, of course, help us get where we're going. But I would ask everybody in the virtual council room, if you ever followed your cellphone and not got exactly where you're going, rural Gray County, and I think we'd all say absolutely. We certainly have had a few examples of that in tourism. So signage is still very important, and this policy is really encompassing. And it's one reason why it took so long, is that we deal with all kinds of signage on county roads, including tourism signage. So the policy talks first about circulation, routes or roads. Roads that we take as our travelers come into Gray County and as we move around within Gray County ourselves. So primary routes are mostly provincial highways, secondary routes are mostly our county roads, and tertiary routes are mostly partner member municipality roads. And then along those routes, we put signage to help people first get to a community or municipality, the community of choice, and then within that community to their final destination, whether it's a private or public destination. So we have various types of signage within the policy. First is gateway or entrance signage. And those are blue and white signs, welcome to Gray County at the county borders. They are also blue and white signs at the boundaries of municipalities. So welcoming folks into the municipality and then into smaller communities. And this policy provides the criteria for how many signs where they go and that sort of thing. So secondly, once folks arrive in their municipality or at their community, we want to direct them to the community. So we have destination signage, and that would be green and white signs that we'll see on county roads, usually on our major county roads, so this way to Meaford or that way to Thornbury, et cetera, et cetera. So that is included within a community destination signage. Thirdly, we have special interest destinations. So these are public. They can be tourism or municipal signs. These would be to places like beaches, trails, airports, some municipal facilities, et cetera, but they are public. So these are blue and white signs, looking a little bit more like the RTO seven type of signage. And we have a range of types of signs, and again, the criteria for where they go, what qualifies for that signage. I should also mention that a subset of these are urban directional signage within urban areas or built-up areas, settlement areas. So we very much want to integrate with our member municipalities. And one of the good pieces of feedback we got when we circulated this policy was, what if we already have a wayfinding signage policy or plan in place? How does that work on county roads? So we're very open to that discussion with the member municipality. If it would make sense to use their particular branded signage in place of what we have within our policy. And then finally, private tourism operations. We are calling this part of our signage policy the Gray County Tourism Oriented Destination Signage. So it's very much in line with provincial Todd's signage that you'll see on provincial highways. And we follow pretty much their list of tourism operations and just bring it down to a county level. So that includes both larger signs for major tourism attractions and the smaller fingerboards for most of our tourism businesses across Gray County. So I think that's pretty much for the signage. One type of signage that isn't included that we contemplate coming in the future is cycling signage. But we're still very much in the formation process, so at some point in the future, that may come back to council for approval. And then I guess the final piece in this report is we are asking council to approve some offsetting funding for our private tourism operations, who've really been greatly impacted by COVID. And in twenty-twenty, we're asking for approval to basically forgive their signage costs at a cost of about twelve thousand dollars, and that would be offset by the federal provincial safe restart municipal operating funding. So with that, Warden Hicks, I think that concludes my report, skipping across the top, but I'd be happy to take any questions if there are.
Thank you very much, Brian. Counsel, are there any questions? Counselor Potter?
Thank you, Brian, for your report. Very good, as always, and I did have a question, though, for counties on the on the boundaries with other counties, which probably takes in just about everybody, or at least most. And sometimes you drive by and see three signs in a row. One says Gray County, one says the name of the municipality, one says the name of the local community. So we have Gray County, Blue Mountains, Craig Lees, or Gray County, the Blue Mountains, Thornbury, for example. And I know that exists in other places, and I think it's more confusing than it is helpful. So I wondered if we can look at a new way of doing that, that will tell people that they've reached a gateway where they've entered Gray County. But also that they are within, for example, Craig Lees, which is part of the Blue Mountains, a part of Gray County. And I, that may be asking a lot. I can see you've got your thinking cap on. But it does seem to me that it's more confusing, and I know I've had that expressed to me, that it's very confusing for people to pass three place signs within, you know, fifteen or twenty meters of each other.
Thank you for the question, and through you, Mr. Warden. We certainly can take that back. I'm not sure if Pat Hoy is any, any further thoughts on that. We certainly can look at it, and we talked to our colleagues, I know, on both the Bruce Borders, the Simcoe County Borders and in North Wellington, Wellington to the south, so we can certainly take that under advisement.
Any other questions from council? Counselor Kivony?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you too, Brian. You mentioned it, but I just wanted to clarify if I could, Brian, you suggested that if a municipality had a branding sign that it could replace a sign that Gray County had, for example, for one of our smaller hamlets.
Actually, I was talking more about, I think, the directional signage rather than the boundary signage. I think the boundary signage, we feel, is pretty much set and in place on county roads. But within urban areas, often there might be some of their directional signage, for instance, in Meaford. I think you have this way to the community center or that way to the library. That kind of signage was what I was anticipating that might be slightly different from our policy. So it's more that kind of signage. I believe we're pretty consistent on historical signage as in the brown and white signs. I think we suggest that, and I think many municipalities use it. And then we have the blue and white entrance for the smaller hamlets and communities.
Pat, did you have something to add to that?
Yeah, just that we have added that, that kind of community signage for a specialty sign, like, you know, in Desborough with their mascot and those types of signs. We still have on the road that general sign telling of the community, but if you wanted a special, you know, like Tobemori with their, you know, the flower pot and that type of thing, those kind of signs are still allowed within our, within our policy. Or Meaford with their apple.
Right, and we all love Desborough, right? Counselor Millen, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm just wondering, and this maybe is a procedural question for the clerk. Should the two recommendations be split into two motions? Because on one hand, we're being asked to endorse a policy here, and the other hand, we're being asked to forgive some funds. And I don't see any reference to the Finance Department, whether they've had a look at this or not, whether there's in fact funds in the municipal restart funding account. So I'm a little unclear here, and there I'm just, I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed to either of the requests here and the recommendation, but I'm just thinking that perhaps for clarity, they maybe should be separated. I'm just, I'm looking to the clerk for her thoughts on that. She hasn't said much today.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Certainly, if that's, if that's counsel's wish, we can, we can separate the questions. I will say that, that all reports are circulated to the finance staff for their review. So Mr. Webler, along with some of his colleagues, have reviewed the report and the recommendations that's contained within the report related specifically to the municipal restart or the federal provincial restart funding. So they are fully aware of the, the information there and where that money would be coming from.
And that's certainly not implying that transportation is want to spend money without asking for finances blessing. That's not my suggestion here, ever. Well, maybe, maybe once in a while, but never regularly. So, anyway.
Okay, I'm gonna move on. Deputy Warden McQueen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and just a couple of points. It does talk about in here on the report, talks about historical community signs, but I did have an email that was reached out to, from my, I guess it would be the Chair of our IMHAC, which is part of our Heritage Committee, and sort of raised the part about whether are designated heritage areas like cemeteries and other historical, you know, recognized areas within our county. And could there be consideration or, you know, so if you're going down, for example, Gray Road Four, and you're going by Gray Road fourteen, and, you know, there would be a sign that would say, the old Durham Black Cemetery, for an example. People would sort of see that wayfinding sign just to know that that's a very historical site. And I only, I just take that as one example of a few, and we, as Gray Hyman's, have recognized those areas. So I know historical community signs is talking more about maybe the hamlets and stuff like that. But I just wondered if that is something that for consideration could be, you know, thought of in the sense, because those are very important when people come into our community, they look for that kind of stuff. I know I look for that kind of stuff when you're, when you're traveling around. So I don't know if there's any comments, so I know I did forward it on to the CEO, to the contact Nancy Matthews, who is that person, and maybe have further conversations, or but anyway, just sort of, you know, just asking, is that something could be considered? You know, because it, it just shows how rich in history Gray County is.
Brian?
Through you, through you, Mr. Warden. It's a great question. We do have a historical marker, a sign type within our policy. So it is for eligible historical location destinations. And it's a blue and white historical plaque, Gray County with an arrow. So I believe we do have that kind of sign type, and that would be very appropriate, I think, for that location. So absolutely, we can, we can look at that.
Okay. So maybe just a follow-up to that, Mr. Warden? Is there a possibility of maybe reaching out to the lower-tier municipalities to sort of identify some of those particular sites? Because again, you know, it's all about sharing to those visitors. And if that's a possibility, then I think that would be something that, if we could continue to work on that and get the right documentation and the right areas to sort of be consistent throughout the county as well, and so that are more proactive in that site. Thank you.
Certainly, Mr. Warden, just very quickly, absolutely, and I was just on the call with Jill Patterson from Bayroots for this call. And I think it would be a great opportunity to reach out and recognize some of those important historical destinations across Gray County. Especially at a time when maybe folks can't get right into the museum, so absolutely, we'll do that.
Thank you. Counselor Gamble, you're next.
Yeah, this question maybe isn't so much to address to Brian, but in Chatsworth, on Highway Six and Ten at Kettle's Corner there, there's a municipality of Meaford sign. And as you probably all realize, Meaford's a long ways away from there. We get more calls on people stopping there and asking, well, where is Meaford? Well, you're still twenty miles away. That's just, I don't know what you do, but
Brian, or maybe Pat?
Yeah, we'll have to, that's, that's sort of news to me a little bit. We'll have a look into that and see what the situation is there. We haven't really got calls on that, but I'll look into that.
Thank you. I think that's it for questions, as far as I can see. So with that said, maybe I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Oh, sorry, all those, anyone opposed? My apologies for misdirecting you there. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is carried. Thank you very much, Brian. We're on to item sixteen now, dealing with the Dundalk Medical Clinic Memorandum of Understanding. Randy, you're on deck for this, and it is moved by Counselor Kivony and seconded by Counselor Woodbury. Randy?
Great, thank you, and can everyone see the screen? Yeah, great, excellent, thank you. So good morning, councillors. So in June of last year, council supported in principle a proposed medical health center in the settlement area of Dundalk in the township of Southgate. Staff were directed at that time to work with the township in southeast Gray to address land matters associated with the proposed health center, including potential land transfers and leases. So just the map on the screen shows the subject lands, which are located between Proton Street North. We got Dundalk Street here and Gray Street West to the west here. The CP rail trail runs through the subject lands, you can see on the, on the map here. We've had further discussions with township and southeast Gray staff, and based on those We've had further discussions with township and Southeast Gray staff and, and based on those discussions. It's recommended that, that a portion of lands owned by the county that is adjacent to the CP rail trail be transferred to the township. So these lands are shown as yellow on the map and shown as part two on the draft reference plan, which is figure two within the staff report. These lands will be used to establish an overflow parking area for the proposed medical clinic. The township will then be able to enter into a lease or, or other agreement with Southeast Gray Community Health Center for the parking area. As well as lands currently owned by the township as shown in purple on the map or, which are also part seventeen and eighteen on the draft reference plan. So the, the proposed medical clinic would be approximately located here. And as, as mentioned, the lands to be transferred to Southgate would are the lands shown here in yellow. Which are adjacent to the CP rail truck quarter. So the land shown in blue on, on the map represents the CP rail trail corridor. And these lands will remain under the ownership of the county. Along with the lands east of the yellow area, which are lands that the county currently leases to Huron Bay Co-op. So those are the lands. Just, just a little bit, you can see them slightly here, but these are lands that are currently leased to Huron Bay Co-op. Again, at this stage, it's recommended that the, obviously those remain under the ownership of, of Gray County. The land shown in red are for what we're proposing is a trail user parking area. So that's shown here in the corner of Gray Street West and Proton Street North. The, it's recommended that this area also be retained by the county. The, the trail user parking area would initially be constructed as part of the medical clinic project in exchange for the lands to be transferred to the township. The trail user parking area will include parking spaces for trailers for ATV snowmobile users. As well as parking spaces for other trail users. Signage would be installed to distinguish the trail user parking area from the medical health center parking area. The, the township or Southeast Gray will maintain that trail user parking area as part of their ongoing responsibilities for this overall project. With the county providing funding to offset the cost of, of the maintenance. By retaining these lands, not only will the county have a parking area that supports users of the county CP rail trail. But the county could also consider repurposing these lands for a future train stop should rail return to the area. So that's another reason why staff are recommending that these lands be retained. This slide here shows a, a portion of the concept plan for, for the parking areas as well as the proposed new medical health center. And it's figure one in the staff report. This is still in draft form, but gives you a sense of what the proposed overall development could look like. So just to highlight some here, so this is the proposed trail user parking area. And as I mentioned, there's spaces here for proposals for trailers. For, for ATV and snowmobile users. This is the proposed medical clinic parking area. As well as this parking area over here specifically for the horse and buggy community. Because as, 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 as councils would know, there's a, there's a large midnight population within Southgate, so. They're actually proposing a barn with horse ties and be specifically separated from the vehicle parking area for, for the horse and buggy community. This is the proposed location for the new medical health center. And, and as you can see, there's accessible parking and, and other parking that's also on the site. Based on the needs for the overall parking though, this is why these lands are required for the medical health center to, to, for overflow parking. There will be crossings across the, the CP rail trail, which I'll explain in a little bit in terms of how. We're going to try to address pedestrian safety. So there will be easements required to, to go across the CP rail trail for this pedestrian crossing. So just to, this is the, a portion of the draft reference plan, which is also figure two in the staff report. And as I mentioned, easements for pedestrian crossing will be required across portions of the rail trail, and these are shown as part six and seven. On the, on the draft reference plan. The township or Southeast Gray again will be responsible for the construction of the pedestrian crossing as well as ongoing maintenance of that crossing. In addition to the pedestrian crossing, improvements will be made to the CP rail trail in and around that pedestrian crossing. To ensure the safety of pedestrians and trail users. These improvements will also be the responsibility of the township and that's expected to be handled by Southeast Gray as part of the overall health center project. These improvements will include things such as lighting, benches, landscaping, signage, as well as other trail design features. To enhance pedestrian safety. So just to go back to the concept plan here. You can see that there also is proposed modifications to the trail just to provide traffic calming. For the, for the trail, for especially for the motorized vehicles that use the CP rail trail. And as I mentioned, there's, there's benches and lighting that's being proposed, as well as signage that will be put up to. Warn users on the trail that there is this pedestrian crossing. And to be aware of that. Staff have worked with township staff and Southeast Gray staff to prepare draft terms of the memorandum of understanding. Which, which basically sets out the various requirements to move forward with the land transfer. As well as the easements for the pedestrian crossing, as well as the construction and ongoing maintenance of the trail user parking area and the pedestrian crossing. It's recommended that the terms of the MOU be endorsed and the staff be directed to finalize and implement the MOU. And to bring forth bylaws for council's consideration. If supported by council, we, we will work with agreement and legal staff. As well as township staff and Southeast Gray to finalize the various agreements and bring these forward for council's consideration. And be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Randy. Perhaps I could ask right off the bat, can you explain again parts on the reference plan? Part six, seven, and seventeen.
Yeah. So part seventeen is a, an existing easement that exists, I believe it's for Bell or Hydro. I can't remember, one of the utilities. So it's showing an existing easement. These lands are also owned by the township of Southgate, but it's an easement for an existing utility. So that would, that's being shown as, 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 as per the draft reference plan. These parts here, part six and part seven are for the pedestrian crossing. I'll just note that. They don't align with what's on the concept plan at the stage. And as I mentioned, the concept plan is draft. It will be revised to, to reflect that there will be a straight pedestrian crossing across the trail. Initially, we were thinking that it would be kind of a curved pedestrian crossing. We think from an overall design perspective, it's best to have it just go straight across the CP rail trail. We can then use signage and other design features to make sure that those pedestrians are safe, so. So the draft reference plate is more correct in terms of where the pedestrian crossing will go. And the concept plan will be revised to, to reflect that, so I should have pointed that out earlier, so I apologize for that.
Thank you, Randy. I can't see all of council, but does anyone have?
I can stop sharing my screen here.
Tom, did I see you waving your hand or you were just touching your head? All right. I don't see anyone with questions. If that's the case, then I will call the question. Anyone opposed to this motion? I see no hands, so that is carried. We're gonna move on to item. Thank you, you're on again, Randy, six F. You're with me. Get to the right screen here. The Ridge Estate subdivision condominium. This is moved by Counselor O'Leary and seconded by Counselor Hutchison. Randy, once again, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So the, the purpose of this report is to consider a proposed plan of subdivision and condominium in the town of the mountains known as Ridge Estates. This proposed development proposes to create a total of thirty-one single detached residential lots. There is also an associated condominium application which proposes to create a condominium road. That would provide access to the proposed lots and would connect to George McCray Road. There is also a private open space recreational area that would be created as a common element condo facility. For the owners of the lots within the subdivision. So the, the map on the screen, which is also included in the report, shows the subject lands. They're approximately two point four hectares in size. They're currently vacant with some trees located on portions of the property. The property is located in what's known as the camper down area, which is located south of Highway Twenty-Six. Approximately between Towne of Thornberry and Gray Road Nineteen as you were to turn to go to the village. The lands are located south of, of the Georgian Bay Club, and you can see the, the golf course holes here on the air photo on the screen. A residential development exists to the east of the subject lands, which is known as the original phase one to this overall development. Farmlands exist west of the subject lands and directly south are vacant lands. The subject lands are approximately. The proposed element also requires, sorry, a zoning amendment, which has been approved by the town. And the lots will be serviced by missile water and sewer services. So this slide shows the proposed plan of subdivision, which as noted includes thirty-one single detached lots, a condo road block. So you can see the, the condo road that's being shown here, as well as a private open space recreational area, which will be located approximately here. In terms of the public comments received, there was a public meeting that was held on October seventh, two thousand nineteen in the town of the mountains. Members of the public provided comments, both in writing as well as comments at that public meeting. A table has been included in the report, which summarizes the public comments received and how those comments have been considered or addressed. I'll just highlight on some of the, some of the comments. There were concerns regarding the state of the phase one subdivision lands, and as mentioned, those are located east of the subject lands. And, and that this proposed development should be considered premature until the phase one lands are brought into compliance, including road upgrades to the existing George McCray Road. As well as street lighting and other things. The town has acknowledged that the phase one Ridge Estates to the east of subject lands does not meet town standards at this time. And draft plan conditions have been included, which addresses required improvements to George McCray Road. And the timing for those improvements as, as it relates to this proposed development. And those conditions were recommended by the town and, and from what I understand was. Part of a lengthy discussion between the town and the developer to arrive at an agreed upon route with respect to those matters. With respect to concerns, we also received concerns about additional residential development encroaching close to active agricultural land. So as I mentioned, there's, there is a farm property west of the subject property. There were suggestions provided to mitigate against some of those impacts, as well as mitigating impacts to wildlife corridors in around this area. The subject lands are designated within a settlement area and therefore minimum distance separation does not apply. Draft plan conditions have been added to require fencing to provide a separation between the residence development and the land surrounding the subject property. Which will also help to delineate delineate the property limits. A draft plan condition has also been added to require necessary notice and warning clauses regarding the adjacent agricultural lands. With respect to the wildlife corridors, there was an environmental impact study that was completed for the proposed development. That's been reviewed by Gray Sobel and the Niagara Skartment Commission. Drop plan conditions have been added requiring such things as a landscape and tree vegetation protection plan in accordance with that environmental impact study. There were concerns regarding old development signs at the entrance of George McCray Road and recommending that they be removed. And, and since that time, the signs have been removed. There were also comments supporting the proposed single attached units. However, comments were also received recommending that the density should be consistent. With the existing development in the area. The, the proposed density is less than what was previously permitted on the subject lands. However, the lot sizes are smaller than the existing. Ridge Estate subdivision to the east or the phase one lands, but it does conform to the density policies in the town's official plan. There are also concerns over the potential use of short term accommodations within the development. And the town zoning bylaw does not permit short term accommodation units on the subject lands. And we have also included a condition of draft approval noting that short term accommodation uses are not permitted. There are also concerns about the proposed private recreational facility and pool and question the need for such facility. The proposed facility could be utilized to either construct a private rec facility. Or they could be used for passive recreation, open space uses, or additional visitor parking. So details on the final use of the lands will be determined at the detailed design stage of the project. So based on the comments received from the public, staff are of the, the opinion that the comments have been addressed. Through either draft plan conditions or through technical review and agency comments. In terms of agency comments received, we received comments from Historic Sagi Matee and Hydro One indicating no objection. We received comments from Canada Post saying that mail will be delivered via essential community mailboxes. We also received comments from Union Gas or Embridge indicating they have no objections. And that easements will be required to provide service to the developments at no cost to Union Gas. We also received comments from Gray Solvo Conservation Authority. They identified initial concerns regarding floodplain mapping and stormwater management. Additional information was provided by the applicants and to address those concerns. Gray Solvo Conservation Authority have reviewed the conditions of draft approval and supports the recommended conditions. We also received comments from the Niagara Skartment Commission. They recommended conditions regarding the protection of trees and vegetation along the boundary of the site. And they also made recommendations regarding grading and height provisions, and those will be addressed as part of the detailed design stage. With respect to the town of the mountains, a town staff report was presented back in March of two thousand twenty. Which recommended support for the proposed development and recommended some draft plan conditions. Further town staff reports were provided to address such matters as required improvements to George McCray Road, as I mentioned earlier. Also to deal with land transfer required to accommodate the driveway entrance. As well as required utilities from George McCray Road to service this development. There's also matters regarding the removal of stockpiles as well as the lifting of a one foot reserve. Town council supported the recommended conditions of draft approval on January twenty-seventh of this year. And those have been included in the recommended conditions attached to the report. So the subject lands are designated as recreational resort area in the county official plan, which is an area. To focus new residential and recreational growth in the county. The lands are also designated as residential recreation area with a small portion designated as hazard lands in the town of the mountains official plan. This designation within the town's plan permits a wide variety of housing types and a maximum density of up to ten units per hectare. So based on staff's review, the proposed development conforms to the county and town's official plans. Is consistent with the provincial policy statement and has regard for matters for provincial interest and the criteria of section fifty-one twenty-four, the Planning Act. As such, staff recommend that the proposed plan of subdivision and condominium be draft approved. Subject to the recommending conditions of draft approval that are attached to the report. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Randy. Counsel? Any questions? I see counselors, so ever.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Randy, for the report. As Randy explained, this is a rather complicated process that we've gone through with the developer. The developer of the property to the east did experience some financial difficulty and then did sell this land. And it was a bit of a learning experience for us on council as well as our development staff in that. The obligations of that developer didn't go with the land, so we are working to remedy that in future agreements with developers. So it's something that maybe other municipalities might be alerted to and learn from, because. Certainly, when you have a development that, you know, was built years ago and the developer has since disappeared and gone bankrupt. And then before that sold a piece of land, then, you know, the responsibilities, especially for George McCray Drive. Which is used to access this. And we were fortunate to be able to talk to the developer in the fact that we own the one foot strip did help in those discussions. And they, they have now, you know, they, we're working with them. They have agreed to fund part of the shortage on the securities to fix that road. Which would have been normally the responsibility of the other developer, but. So it is complicated. The one question I have for Randy is, in the subdivision agreement. It talks about notices to prospective purchasers and I think it's warnings on title. So since those are part of the subdivision agreement, who, who is gonna ensure that? Those actually do make it through and so that. When there is sales documents put together and 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 titles are registered that these warnings are there. To prospective purchasers, because there is a great concern and we have that everywhere in the town of Blue Mountains that. When these developments are adjacent to agricultural lands, people buy houses and then. Buy lots and houses and then later on they come to the town and say, well, there's. There's, you know, these guns making sounds chasing away birds and. People are spraying crops and so there's always this conflict with the agricultural uses. And so that's why. At the town level, we did, that was part of big discussion during the public process. And so I'm glad to see that these are required now so that. You know, when when these complaints come forward, we can say to those property owners, well, you knew where you were moving and so. Sorry, but there was all, there's always been a farm there and the farm is there and you were told the farm was there and so. You know, we can't do anything about it. You should have read the documents and you should have been alerted to that. So who is gonna? Make sure since the subdivision is at the county level, does the county verify that these conditions are met?
Randy?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, so the the conditions of draft approval, for sure, the county will ensure that all those conditions of draft approval would be met prior to issuing final approval. With respect to that particular matter, that will have to be incorporated into the subdivision subdivision agreement. The details with respect to require requiring notice. But will also be included in the subdivision agreement. And the subdivision agreement, of course, is registered on title to the subject land, so any. Any future buyer will be identified or can can obviously get access to that subdivision agreement. Prior to them purchasing their their lot. And and be notified of that way. But there may be other measures too that can be incorporated as part of the subdivision agreement to to ensure that. That prospective buyers are are notified of 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 those nearby active uses, so. So those are some of the details that we'll be working with town staff on, making sure that those conditions have been addressed as part of the agreement. Prior to the county issuing final approval.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands, Madam Clerk. I think that's it. That's the case, then I think we're ready to call the question. To receive the report, to acknowledge receipt and consideration of certain written and oral submissions. And finally, to prove the plan of subdivision and condominium. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is carried. Thank you very much, Randy. Stephanie Lacy Avon, you are on deck. We are dealing with County Forest Track Tract renaming. Tract renaming. And it is moved by councillor Burley and seconded by councillor Mill. Stephanie? No, sorry, that's moved by councillor Carlton and seconded by councillor Clumpus. My apologies for that.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and County Council. So we're good with the presentation?
Yes.
So before us, we have the County Forest Tract renaming report. So why are staff proposing to rename some of the county forest properties?
Did you want us to see your notes?
No, you can see my notes. Okay.
Know what you need to maximize your screen perhaps.
Stephanie, do you have two screens going?
I do.
Yeah, that's what happens.
Hey, well.
Another way to do it is it may take a little bit of time is export out as a PDF, the presentation, and then you can share the screen as a PDF. It's just a zoom function. It's it makes it bizarre.
It's not a problem. We can take a five minute break.
Or we can just follow along with her notes.
Yeah, or we can do that.
Which is your preference? We can take a short break and.
Yeah, that would be super. Sorry, sorry, everyone.
We do that. It is now. Let me look at my. Eleven fifty three. So why don't we come back at noon exactly? Okay, very short break.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone, I believe we have a quorum. I will just move things along. Rob, am I good to go?
You're good to proceed, Mr. Warden.
Thank you very much. So. We're back dealing with the county forest tract renaming. And Miss Lacy Avon, you have the floor.
Thank you. We'll try this one again.
Yay.
It works. We're good?
We're good.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, guys, and thank you, council and Mr. Warden. So before us, we have the County Forest Tract renaming report. Why are staff proposing to rename some of the county forest properties? In two thousand nineteen. The planning department implemented the recreational trails master plan. And part of that, there were recommendations to improve the county forest properties. One of them was to consider a unique name for each county forest tract. In accordance with the county's asset naming policies. And so staff are working on ways in which to better promote our county forest properties. And this initiative falls under that umbrella really nicely. So we're looking to add the following changes to some of the county forest. Property names such as cardinal directions and north, south, east, west. Consolidating property names if the adjacent property is, sorry, if there's a property adjacent to one another to have it named as the same name. And as well to emphasize sense of place. So we consulted a variety of individuals throughout this process. We connected with our Grey Roots Archive staff. They have a fantastic resource that outlines. Gray County Historic Communities. We also connected with Gray Solvo Conservation and Sogging Valley Conservation Authority to identify. Some of the unique significant natural heritage features in proximity to some of these select properties. Also connected with Gray County Tourism Communications Manager and Camp Oliver Forest Group as well as Sogging Nidjibwe Nation. The resources referenced throughout this process specifically was the corporate asset naming policy. Throughout that policy, there's general preference given to certain names. And staff have opted to stick to the above four criterion. So looking at names that would look to provide a sense of place, continuity and belonging, reflecting the geographic location, community or neighborhood. Recognize historical significance of the area, reflect unique characteristics of the site or asset. And recognize the native flora and fauna. The policy also speaks to some of the criteria that around prohibited names. Such as names that would cause confusion due to duplication or similarity with existing names. Those that would be affiliated with religious or a political organization. Those that have an inappropriate acronym or are discriminatory or derogatory. So I'll be going through the table provided in the report quickly and so we have track number one. Just for your references, while the report includes a PDF map. So if you want to follow along with that map, it might help just to orient. You'll be going through all these properties and are located all throughout the county. So we have track number one. Its current name is Artemisia Osprey Town Line. Looking to rename it Lady Bank. It is one one block away from the historic community of Lady Bank. We have track number two. Artemisia Euphrasia Town Line, looking to rename it to Eugenia. Located two concessions north of Eugenia Lake and it's located near Eugenia Settlement Area. We have Collingwood nineteen. Suggested rename to Gibraltar, just north of Gibraltar, a historic settlement. Historic Gray County Community. We also have Collingwood Osprey Town Line, looking to rename to McKean's Mills. It's close to historic community, McKean's Mills. We have Collingwood Landlocked. That name certainly doesn't inspire for you to come there and carry out any recreational activities. So we're looking to rename it to Colaphe Headwaters. It is a landlocked property, but it is connected to various provincial as well as conservation lands. And so there is access to it through other trail networks. So Colaphe Headwaters is a, there's a Colaphe Headwaters Wetland feature in proximity to this property. We have track number eleven, which is currently named Drumore East, looking to remove the east. From that name to rename it to simply Drumore. Drumore was a previous historical settlement in Gray County. And we don't believe including the east is required to orient people to this property. We have Camp Oliver. We have a lot of Camp Oliver names throughout this. So I hope to kind of provide clarity and we can definitely revisit this after going through them. We have track number twelve, which is currently called Camp Oliver Egremont, looking to rename Camp Oliver East. It's connected to track number nineteen, so we're looking to simplify this area. By naming track nineteen and track twelve the same. It's located in proximity to where the former Camp Oliver camp was and it's adjacent to Camp Oliver Road. We have track thirteen. For a corner, looking to simply spell out four. We have track seventeen, Camp Oliver Glen Elg, looking to rename to Top Cliff North. It's located in proximity to the other Camp Oliver properties, so we're hoping to alleviate some confusion there. And transitioning to Top Cliff, which is a was a historic community in the former Glen Elg Township and it's. There's also a Top Cliff Swamp Wetland Complex located east of the subject lands. The following is, we have track number nineteen, Gray Main. Camp Oliver. So we're looking to name it Camp Oliver. Again, same as track number twelve. We have track number twenty one. It's called Camp Oliver, looking to rename that one Top Cliff South. It's connected to track seventeen. It is bisected by a road, so we're just looking to include the cardinal cardinal directions there. For track twenty two and twenty three, we have the Rocky Soggy, Rocky Sogging. We're hoping to add east and west, just to better orient individuals. We have highway ten. Looking to rename it to Hamilton Creek. Portion of Hamilton Creek Wetland Complex is located on the property. We have Taylor Road, looking to rename to Robson Lakes. Immediately adjacent across the street is the Robson Lakes Antsy, so the area of natural, area of natural and significant interest. We have Camp Copper Kettle. For track thirty one and thirty two, looking to add cardinal identifiers, so north and south to these properties for for better reference and orientation for individuals. We have track thirty three. Which is currently named Lake Francis and hoping to just flip those words to Francis Lake as it's commonly known locally as Francis Lake. We have track thirty five, which is the Quarry property. It's called Quarry. Again, does not inspire recreational use. So we're looking to consult and we've connected to a Sogging Nidjibwe Nation on this property specifically. They are keen and willing to help us rename this property. We just unfortunately haven't had them provide us with that name as of yet. But they've done this in the past and what they typically do is they will visit the property with some of the elders of their community. And they look at what the environmental features around the property as well as any other local historical context they can provide and will. Come up with a name through that process. So we're really looking forward to connecting with them further on this specific property. And then finally, we have track forty five, which is called Chatsworth. And surprisingly, that property is actually located in Neeford. So we're looking to limit confusion with this one. And call it Sunny Valley, Sunny Valley North and South. There are there are three properties in total. They are bisected by Sunny Valley Road. So what does this mean in terms of resource allocation and implementation? Again, through the RTMP, there are many, many recommendations that we're currently in the process of implementing. And part of this is recognizing that the county forest signage is seventeen plus years old. So those are the main property identifier signs that are currently on the county forests. We are really trying to revamp some of the the county's assets. To to promote them and to to modernize them so that when we start directing more people to these areas, they are viewed as maintained properties. And so prior to adding and investing in a lot of signage, we are looking to rename these properties. Just as that that makes sense. From a sequence perspective. And as well, you would have to make updates to the county's website and other mapping available to the public, but that is something that would require minimal staff time and resources. And so based on staff's review, county staff are recommending the County Forest Tract renaming report be received. And and the properties be renamed as per the report and be formally endorsed by County Council. Firmly endorsed by County Council. Sorry, and Forest Track number thirty five be renamed to the preferred name to be provided by Sogging Nidjibwe Nation. And so have you take any questions at this time and we can certainly revisit some of those property names specifically. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. I'm just a little disappointed that I didn't see Box Forest in there. Counselor, are there any questions? I can't see the full group, so I'll need your help, Heather.
I do see councillor McQueen.
Deputy Warden, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for the report and it's exciting how many properties are out there, I must say. The one thing that was raised from a resident to me was just in the sense of. From amalgamation back in two thousand, there was a lot of the older, smaller municipalities. And the thought that was presented to me was, is that a poss, could that be a possibility that you in in those areas, could some of those forces or areas be named like? Artemisia Forest or the, like, for example, there's an Osprey Wetlands that's down. On the very east side of Gray County and and the old part of Osprey. It was just something that was raised to me and I just sort of there for discussion and it's sort of, it's sort of recognizing our history of the smaller municipalities that are out there, just in keeping those names. Sort of a memory thing. I just sort of there for discussion. Thank you.
Stephanie, any comment?
Um, yeah, certainly councillor McQueen, that's a really good point. And it was actually something that the Grey Roots Archivist flagged as well through consultation with with her. The the piece that's a bit challenging is trying to balance how you would adequately. Promote these properties so that people would be able to get to them from a tourism perspective. While also recognizing that there there may be may be opportunity to to name and keep those historical historical names. Attributed to these properties. So the the piece that we struggled with a bit was that. Some of the properties are named by, and they've they've included the the previous townships. They are named though with the the names of the town line, so the Artemisia Osprey Town Line. And so the the historical significance of those previous or the older townships have been incorporated through a lot of the road networks. And so that's what makes it a bit challenging if we were to. Associate the names to the county forest properties, there then gets to be quite a few names that are very similar in a certain geographic area. But it's certainly something we can look into further for some of those specific properties. It's just ultimately to look at. Are there ways to limit confusion when when moving ahead and promoting some of these properties? But I it was definitely a piece that was discussed and I. definitely understand the value in preserving that historical significance.
And just to follow up, Mr. Warden. Absolutely. And, and yeah, if you had more than one, one property that was in the old boundary of that particular township, then it would be a little tougher. You couldn't have Artemisia one, Artemisia two, I understand. But anyway, it was brought to my attention. So I thought I'd throw it out there for discussion and I don't know if there's any other discussion around the table, but thanks very much for your, your response to that. Thank you.
Okay. I do not see any other hands. So with that said, I will call the question. Thank you very much, Stephanie. So on the motion to receive the report and to adopt the naming recommendations therein, is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is carried. Once again, thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
We are on to other business.
No, we have one item pulled from the consent.
Yes. Apologies. Six G. And so we need a mover. I'm going to say council whoever you're probably prepared to move.
Yes, I, I'm prepared to move this.
And seconded by Deputy Warden McQueen. Counselor, so ever you have the floor.
Yes, I'm, I'm just pulling this. This was a resolution that we passed at our council. And certainly, you know, this is something that we focused on in the town of the Blue Mountains for our first two years of our term is tracking down all of our missing assessments. And we've been very successful at that. In fact, we, over the last two years, we, we found 1.8 million dollars of tax revenue. That's, and that's also meant an additional 1.7 million dollars of tax revenue to Gray. So the, when I look back at our history, it's not quite that rosy in that the, I'm just trying to find the numbers here. There we go. Yeah. So prior to that, the four years under the last council, we only captured about 58% of our building permits. The last two years, we've caught up substantially by 215% of the last two years building permits. So obviously we can't actually find more supplementary than we have building permits, but you can look back three years. So we've caught up quite a bit. And so that has meant an additional 500 million of assessment in our community, which has brought us this extra tax revenue. And had we continued on at the rate that we did before of fifth capturing only 58% of our tax revenue, we would have had an 11.4% higher tax rate at the local level than we do today. So the impact is quite substantial. So I did look at the rest of Gray County and I was very pleased that there are several communities that are capturing almost 100% of their building permits. Since 2014, I look back five years in the FIR data. There's, you know, two communities that are capturing almost 100%. We're catching up our average for those five years, which didn't include 2020 with about 77. There are another two communities that are in the same kind of range. But there are three communities that seem to be capturing less than 50% of their building permanent data. So there is a significant shortfall in what the county should be getting in taxes from those communities. So this is why I brought the motion that a Blue Mountains Council to bring to county council. And it's, I would like to propose that we we receive this and, and direct staff to do a quick assessment, much as I did, based on the easily available data. My assessment's an estimate because I don't have the details of the supplementary, which the county has. And the building permit data, of course, is available in the FIRs and, and from the building departments. And I'm sure everybody'd want to, you know, cooperate. And just to, to see if these numbers that I've derived are, are, are accurate and what we can do to help these communities capture all of their assessment because you know, it allows you to have a lower tax rate at the local level and at the county level. And certainly, I think, you know, it's incumbent upon all of us to make sure that, you know, not only do we watch the spending, but we make sure that we get all the revenue into the county that we, we're supposed to have.
Okay, thank you. I believe that what you're proposing is an amendment to what we have, because we have just to receive.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. The one challenge is that the, the resolution was sent to each of the lower tiers, correct?
Yes, as well as the county and as well as MPAC. And MPAC has offered to help in any way they can.
Okay. So Madam Clerk, I, I need some help from you.
Sure. I think certainly if, if Counselor Soever wants to present an amendment that directs staff to complete this, then that is appropriate for this resolution, because you are correct, it is to be received for information, because it was sent to the local municipalities for their support. And it was received by the county here. Just for information, we did that so that we could hear from the local municipalities on what their stance was on that. If council wants to vote on it here, that's certainly up to them.
Okay. So I, I see a few hands up, but I'm, I'm going to suggest and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, that Counselor Soever said, well, move his amendment, which would include now direction. If people don't want the staff to do what is being proposed, then they would vote against it. And then we would go, go back to simply receiving it.
That's correct. If, if the amendment is proposed and it's seeking staff direction, we would just be voting on that amendment for staff direction.
Okay. So Counselor Soever, are you?
Yes, I, I would like to move that staff prepare a, a very preliminary assessment of, of the potential shortfalls in assessment for council consideration, for council information, sorry.
Assessment of shortfalls.
Yeah.
I would need a seconder for that. We do not have a seconder. Oh, we have a seconder in Counselor Potter. Okay. Discussion now. I, I, I acknowledge that there were some hands up previous to this, but I'm going to entertain discussion on the, the amended motion. Counselor Body.
Yeah. My, my thinking is I'd rather just have received it here at this level, because we're going to have to discuss it with our lower tier treasures and respond. And from my thinking, it makes more sense for us to respond from lower tier back to the town of Blue versus getting the county involved, which then gets our treasures involved. Yeah, we're, we're going to get to the same point, place, but I think it makes more sense to do it from, from the lower tier than from the county. So I'd, I'd rather receive it here. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Millen, I noticed you took your hand down.
I was just whatever he said. What he said. Yeah. Yeah, that guy. Yeah. That guy from One Sound. Yeah.
Anyone else? I see no other hands. I see a few chuckles. So I, I guess we are ready to call the question. Is there anyone opposed to the motion? Sorry?
Mr. Warden, I'd like a recorded vote, please.
Okay. Madam Clerk, I'm in your hands.
Hey. Yes, we are voting on the amendment and the amendment is that staff be directed to undertake a high level. Let's hear it, God. Tara's just going to bring up the, the amendment so that everyone is aware of what they're voting on. So the emotion be amended to strike out for information and add the clause staff be directed to undertake an assessment of the potential shortfalls in assessment for Gray County.
Okay.
Okay.
A little needs some clarification.
After voting on this, would it then be possible once, assuming this is defeated, that having each lower tier gathering information at their own with their, from their own treasure, that we could come back to this question and look at it countywide? Once we look at it individually through our lower tiers? Does that make sense?
Madam Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Warden. If we vote on today to direct staff and that is lost, that resolution is then endorsed at county council on March 11th. And if you want to relook at that question again, that's under reconsideration. And within a year of the original vote, then you would need someone that voted on the prevailing side of the question to bring it back for reconsideration.
And does that require just a simple majority?
It does now, yes.
Okay. All right. Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would just like to comment that we had this on our council meeting last night and have already directed staff to proceed. So this is kind of adding another layer to what the original request was, in my opinion. Thank you.
Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I'm certainly willing to bring this up at our, our lower tier. I'm just wondering and through you to, to Kevin, what his take is on it and whether there's merit in supporting this at a county level. Thank you.
Kevin?
Yes. I really, you know, I don't have evidence to, to know how well the, the local municipalities are doing on this. And, and, but you know, I, I think they're very busy people, doing a very good job as best they can. It's taking on it. When the county doesn't issue building permits or have the local knowledge of those building permits and what's happening, it'd be difficult for me to analyze this without going through each local treasurer and the building departments to, to figure that, figure that out. But in saying that, the county has done other audit exercises that were, you know, we've looked at year over year changes on properties, looked at anomalies with vacant properties, looked at the values of the land and things like that. That, that's something here more that we could do. But when it gets right into those building permits and stuff, I, I, I'm saying, I don't have the local, the local, you know, maybe a building permit was issued, but maybe that building hasn't, hasn't moved forward and is sitting in as a shell or something and it hasn't come on. And, and there's reasons for that. So those are my, my initial reactions to this. That I would, it'd be better for the local treasurers to, to respond, I guess. But, but that's, but it's not to say that the county doesn't have a role. Like I said, we can, we have done other audits here where we can can utilize things here at the upper tier level to identify issues and then work with the local treasures to, to say, okay, is there something wrong here? But I hope, I hope that helps answer the question.
You're on mute, Mr. Warden.
That's right. My apologies. Deputy Warden McQueen.
That's twice now, Mr. Ward. I'm not counting. Just, just for thought, Mr. Warden and county council, I wonder if it would be prudent to put a motion to defer this because of what's being said here about the opportunities for the lower tier. I think there's merit to what is being brought forward here, but maybe we need to have that time. It's been mentioned of the lower tiers having opportunity to be familiarized with this resolution. And I, I just wondered, I guess procedurally to you, to the clerk, if I put a motion to defer this for one month, is that, does that take precedence over this? And that sort of freezes it and brings it back in, in a month's time? Is that something that is a possibility?
Madam Clerk?
Okay. If you put a motion on the floor to defer this, you can do that. That will take precedence over the amendment is my understanding. And we could, you'd have to specify a time that it be deferred until. So if it's the next meeting or if it's the last meeting in March, I'm not sure whether that would give the local municipalities enough time to review the resolution and provide their comments back to the county. But certainly, that's something that council can, can look into.
Okay. And just for clarity through you, Mr. Warden, I, I can't have, we can't have discussion on deferral, right? Or do we?
Yes. Yeah. So i- if, if you brought, well, if you're motioning a deferral, that would take precedent over the motion right now to amend.
Okay. So
Have discussion on deferrals.
Okay. So I, I suggest bringing a motion up to FERL forward, maybe to, I, I'm going to say maybe a six week period with, and let me give more time for the lower tiers to have that information. I think it's very important to have this discussion at the county, but I think it's important. Maybe I better stop talking because I need to get a seconder. So I do, I do move a motion to defer this for six weeks to give opportunity for the lower tiers to comment first.
Okay. And so I'm now looking for a seconder. I see Counselor Robinson with her hand up. Are you agreeing to second?
Yes, pardon me. Yes, Miss Board. Now I will agree to second. West Gray Council will be looking at the correspondence from the town of the Blue Mountains on March 2nd. And I'm thinking within the, the duration, that would also give the lower tier councils an opportunity to consider this if they have not done this already. I think it's prudent. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm now inviting comments on the motion to defer. I see hands up. Counselor, so ever you're going to be commenting on the motion to defer?
Yes, I, I'm very happy with deferring that. Obviously, you know, if it requires to, to effective, it would require that all lower tiers do look at it. And so I'm happy to revisit this in six weeks when they've had the chance to. This isn't a huge exercise. You know, all of the, you know, at, at least that first glance, because we're not looking at individual properties. We're just looking at a comparison between two numbers. The, the, the total value of building permits and the amount of supplementary assessment captured. Obviously there are a lot of details. But yes, those two numbers will give a very good idea of the magnitude of the problem. And so I'm happy to refer and revisit this in six months. Or I mean
Thank you. And, and just to be clear, we would be deferring receipt, correct? Because this thing has been brought to council for receipt. And we're now saying we're going to defer discussion on it, meaning the entire thing is being deferred, not just the amendment.
I'm fine with that.
That's correct.
And Counselor Body, I think I saw your hand.
He went up, went down. I've maybe got a question going back to Kevin. I understand that the treasures have all spoken about this very recently at a treasures meeting and they're already on top of it. I wonder if Kevin can comment on that.
Yeah, we met la- last Friday at a local treasures meeting and discussing tax policy. And I raised this issue and, and, and there was, I guess, mixed messages. Some didn't speak to it at all. Some stated, stated they felt they were doing a good job on it. And others said, you know, if the county wanted to do like an assessment roll audit like they've done in the past at a high level, they wouldn't be against that. If there's something to be found, that they'd be, be willing for, to support the county in doing something like that. But I really didn't get any, any real true direction when it came to the building permits versus supplementary from, from the local treasures, to be honest.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin.
Mr. Warden, Counselor Millen. You're on mute, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, if I might, Mr. Warden. It strikes me that if we receive, if we go, if we defeat the motion to defer, we defeat the amendment and just receive it. The, the treasures have already talked about it. They're on it. In their minds, it's, it's in all of our interests to make sure that the, as the assessments are current. I, I, I'm not sure. We need to, you know, draw more resources into this question than need be. I, I'm not going to support to defer or to amend it. I think if we just received it as originally proposed, that would, would deal with the issue sufficiently, in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I do not see anyone else, so perhaps it's time. Counselor Soever, are you going to be calling a recorded vote? I guess not. You're fine with me just calling the question?
Yes.
Okay, so is there anyone opposed to the motion to defer? I see one. Eight, nine.
Since, since it's that close, I will ask for a recorded vote.
Okay.
Okay. So you are voting just whether to defer or not? I'm off mute, because I am. Okay. Counselor Mackey.
In favor?
Counselor Gamble. Counselor Gamble?
Right, defer.
I'm sorry?
In favor?
Thank you. Counselor Burley.
Opposed.
Counselor. Whoops. Counselor Carlton.
Opposed.
Counselor McQueen.
Support.
Counselor Little.
Opposed.
Counselor Patterson.
Opposed.
Warden Hicks.
Nay.
Counselor Columbus.
Opposed.
Counselor Keveney.
Opposed.
Counselor Body.
Proposed.
Counselor O'Leary.
Opposed.
Counselor Woodbury.
Opposed.
Counselor Millen.
Nay.
Counselor Soever.
In favor?
Counselor Potter.
In favor?
Counselor Robinson.
In favor.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Opposed.
Motion is lost 60 to 30.
Okay, so now we are back on the amended motion, correct, Madam Clerk, which is
Mr. Warden.
Direction for staff to prepare an assessment. All right, are we ready? Any further discussion on that? Then we'll call the question, unless somebody's going to be asking for a recorded vote. I don't see a request for recorded votes, so I'm going to call the question. Is there anyone opposed? Yes?
In the light of the fact that we, we voted to defer, I'm willing to withdraw that motion.
Okay, so now we're on the main motion, which is the motion to simply receive. Is there anyone opposed to the motion to receive? There are no hands showing, so that is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, we are now ready to deal with other business. Is there any other business?
Kind of pies for lunch, Madam Clerk.
I'm going to call on Rob. I know that, oh, sorry, Counselor Potter. I see your hand up.
Yes, I have a notice of motion. Would now be the appropriate time to bring it?
No, I, I guess, actually, let's see.
No, it'll be after other business?
Oh, okay, sorry. I didn't have, I, my, I was on the wrong page of my agenda. I will wait till the appropriate time.
No worries. So if there is no one with other business, I will call on Rob, because I understand that he has some other business.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to quickly update council on a positive development that following the last council meeting, I was approached by the station manager at Rogers TV out of One Sound. And they are interested in picking up the council stream or council and committee of the whole on Thursday mornings and airing that on Rogers TV out of One Sound, which covers the city, parts of Georgian Bluffs over to Meaford and into the town of the Blue Mountains. So I think that would be positive for increasing our reach through a more traditional means that we haven't been a part of before. There's no cost, because I just need to invite the station manager to our Zoom meetings, so that they can pick that up. But it does mean that we're going to have a second party involved in recording the meetings. So we just need to be aware that we should consider ourselves live at all times, prior to meetings, during breaks, and all of that, because of what might be getting picked up. I did talk with him about process for closed meetings and what that would look like, how we would just remove Rogers from the meeting in the event of a closed. If it was closed at towards the end of a council meeting, they would probably just discontinue their coverage at that time. And they can only confirm coverage until about noon. So on a day like this, where the meeting does go long, they would simply just leave the meeting. So we're prepared to start at our next meeting on March 11th. And if you have any questions, I can try to answer them now, or you can send me an email and I can get back to you that way as well.
Very good. Is there any, Counselor Robinson has a question?
Well, thank you. First of all, Rob, this through you, Mr. Warden, this is fantastic, good news, and it certainly extends communication reach in, in a different vehicle. My question is, if there was another TV service provider interested in doing the same thing, would, would this also be possible, either now or in the future? Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. The process would be the same, that I think I could provide it on their end. They have a means to, to stream live, the same way that Rogers does. I'm not sure what another provider's capabilities would be, but I don't see any reason why it couldn't happen. And I did forget to mention as well that, looking to the future, this is something that would be able to continue when we do get back into council chambers, since we have already equipped ourselves with that recording equipment in there as well.
Thank you very much. I don't see anyone else with a hand up, so that's it there. And we will turn things over now to Madam CAO, who has some other business.
Thanks very much, Mr. Warden. And council, it's my pleasure to introduce to you formally our, our new Director of Human Resources, Jennifer Moreau. I wanted everybody to get a chance to, to see Jennifer and, and allow her to say a few words. We're so delighted to have her. She started on the 16th of February. She's got 15 years of experience in both municipal and the healthcare sectors. She's hit the ground running here, and we're, we're just delighted to have her on the team. But Jen, if you wanted to say a few words to council?
Hello, everyone, and through you, Mr. Warden, I just wanted to say hello, and I look very much forward to working with you and modernizing our HR processes and policies. I look forward to meeting all of you in person as soon as we're able, and of course, to Counselor Soever and Counselor Potter to continue our working relationship. So thank you, everyone, and it's been a pleasure to join the team at Gray County, and I look forward to what we can achieve.
Awesome. Thanks so much, Jennifer. One last thing. Today is Tara Warder's last day for a little while. She's going on a leave. And I just wanted to say thank you to Tara for all of your great work. We're going to miss you. And we look, hope everything goes so well, and we look forward to having you back. And thanks. Yay.
All right, and Tara, I know you've prepared a speech.
It's coming up, guys. Be gone for a short time.
All right, counselor.
I'll be back in September, so we'll see you all then, and have a great summer, hopefully in person.
We'll see. All the best. Counselor Potter.
Uh, yeah, yes, I just wanted to welcome Jennifer. She, we will miss her at Town of the Blue Mountains. She's been a valuable part of our team. But the county's gain is our loss, or vice versa. But at least we still get to see her once in a while, and we know that she'll be a great addition to the county's team.
Thank you, sir. Yes, welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mr. Warden.
I think that is it for other business. We're on to notices of motion now. Counselor Potter.
Thank you, Warden, and I would like to bring a notice of motion regarding the collaborative decision-making process for Gray County and possible review. So I will bring that at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. And are there any other notices of motion? Seeing none, we'll move on to adjournment. It's moved by Counselor Burley and Counselor Mill that we adjourn. Is there anyone opposed to that motion? I'm saying heck no. Enjoy your apple pie, or whatever flavor it may be. Thanks, everyone.
Take care.
Thank you. Take care.
Thanks, everyone.